For the Cedar Rapids Community School District. The meeting is now called to order. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Hang on. I moved that the agenda of Monday, August 9th, 2021, oh my God, I can't do it.
Okay, I'll help out. I moved that the agenda of Monday, August 9th, 2021 Board of Education meeting be approved as set forth and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Porchiding.
Aye.
Director Merschprach.
Aye.
Director Garlak.
Aye.
Director Reesinger.
Aye.
President Humbles.
Aye.
And next, we'll turn over to Superintendent Bush for her report.
Thank you very much, President Humbles. Good evening, Board of Directors, and here we are in August. So I always say in August, it's Happy New Year for us. So happy school year, new year. So just a lot of things have happened even since we met last time in July. And I'd like to start this meeting by congratulating our communications team who received an incredible award. They're the only, this, this award is from the National School Communications Awards. And that is the National Organization for School Communications Departments. They received an exemplary Public Relations Award. It was the Golden Achievement Award. We're the only school district in the state of Iowa who has received this award. And that is due to the featured work that they did over our crisis after crisis last year in keeping our community informed. And so just hats off to this team and all the work that they do to keep our community and our staff and our families informed. So well deserved, very proud of them. And I always love it when I say, and we're the only district who got that award. Not that I'm competitive. So congratulations to that team. Here we are again, it is Happy New Year and we are preparing for it. So just in the past couple of weeks, our executive council team has had their kickoff meeting, our teacher leaders have had their kickoff meeting, our building leadership teams have been meeting in their kickoff meetings, and many of our departments getting together and planning for the school year to come. Just today, our new certified staff was on board. We welcomed them, of course, to Team Cedar Rapids. And our classified staff is coming in as well. And so here we are, they're rolling in and August is upon us. So this is a picture of our teacher leader teams who did some heavy lifting last week to prepare for our new teachers in the school year ahead of us. So just appreciate our staff keeping their focus on our kids and preparing for the school year. And what's not pictured there, I should say, or highlighted, is all the teachers and staff who in their off time just get into their classrooms over the summer anyway and prepare for our school year. So in addition to that, more preparation, some behind the scenes teams. This is a picture of our tech department preparing over 2,000 machines for our new students coming into the district. That being over 1,000 kindergarteners alone, that's a good news note for our school district. And so much work going behind the scenes. Our human resources department onboarding people every single day, just about Executive Director Nagle, folks coming in. Our transportation department has been putting out the APB to everybody to come on in and be a bus driver for us. So every day we have someone new and preparing and just thank you for all of our team members, again, preparing for our kids. So just as a reminder, friends, today is August 9th, tomorrow is August 10th. And as much as we are celebrating the preparation for this school year, just one year ago, this is what our district was having to deal with. And so those are pictures, of course, of classrooms and schools and spaces across our district. And to think about what we had to do at this time last year on top of the pandemic, getting ready for school, is just absolutely incredible. So there is a specific team I would like to give a shout out to tonight. If you go to the next slide, please hear Justin. What our Buildings and Grounds team have managed from August 10th, 2020 through just May of 2021, they recovered 21 elementary schools and three middle schools and an off-site program and metro high school to be prepared by September 21st. Then they recovered two more middle schools by November, and then Jefferson and Washington and Taft by December, then Kennedy by January, and continued, didn't stop, new construction as well on West Willow and broke ground on Maple Grove. I can't even tell you what this team has done. John's in the crowd here, if you just want to give a wave to the team. Absolutely incredible work. But of course, as John would tell you, the work didn't stop there. Next slide, please, Justin. Summer 2021, construction upgrades everywhere. So we've got gym floors, we've got new driveways, we've got new floors at Hiawatha, a new auditorium at Jefferson, Franklin, Harding, everywhere around the district upgrades, new entryways in some of our middle schools, HVAC systems, I don't know, John, on and on and on. So the work never stops, but it's an incredible team managing an incredible amount of work. No other district has had to do what we've had to do in a year's time, and that takes great leadership, committed employees, serving kids every day. So thank you, Buildings and Grounds team. And then lastly, this is really top of everybody's mind right now, is vaccination update and really COVID updates. So we will be doing a deeper dive into this in our presentation tonight about back to school during our leading, learning and leadership portion of our meeting. But just as a reminder, vaccination access, we're grateful to have had that access last spring. Our school district, at least 70% of our employee group is vaccinated. We have new employees that have come on board and we don't necessarily know the full data on that, but better than 70% of our employee group is vaccinated. Proud to say that we offered vaccinated, vaccination clinics recently at Roosevelt, Van Buren, JSA, Harrison, and Cleveland. 274 community members took advantage of that vaccination clinic. And thank you for the collaboration with Lynn County Public Health to make that happen. Reminder that CR-CSD is the only school-based health clinic in the state of Iowa, which means that our health nurses can vaccinate individuals who choose to be vaccinated. So our students had access to that in the spring when that was allowed. And our students who are eligible and want a vaccination can do that through our school-based clinics. And I just want to thank our school nursing team and Lynn County Public Health for continuing to provide this access. And as we know that the things are shifting and changing and we're learning more and more every day, this is a great mitigation effort and we just strongly encourage those who are eligible and can, please take advantage of vaccinations. Lastly, on that same note, health and safety continues to be our priority. So we're going to review in our back to school information tonight, our mitigation efforts and health and safety efforts as we are returning to school here in a couple of weeks. We know that the Delta variant has caused a rise in cases, and it seems to be the acceleration of the rate, perhaps not the intensity of the side effects. But we also know that those who are vaccinated seem to have, the data is telling us so far from public health that they have less, fewer side effects or not as, what do I want to say, intense side effects. And so we'll continue to monitor and respond as we get information from Iowa Department of Public Health and the Department of Education, et cetera, and Lynn County Public Health. This is what we've learned, if we've learned nothing else in the past year, to continue to be flexible, continue to learn, and continue to communicate as quickly as we can to our families and to our staff members and to our community, as we are responsible to serve our kids and keeping everyone safe, and that is our number one priority. So here's hot off the presses, new information for everyone, a mitigation effort that we're going to put in place. And I'll tell you, it hurts my heart to even say this, however, we had a live event planned to welcome all of our staff back on August 20th in the ICE arena, better than, you know, 3,300 employees to be there all together. And just as a safety mitigation, knowing that school starts on Monday, not having quite that many people in one space at one time, we're going to create an alternative plan for that. So I am sorry, employees in the house, your heart's hurting like mine, but we just want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to keep everybody safe and healthy. And I'm choosing to wear a mask now as well. And if you looked at last month's board meeting, I was not. So we are just going to do our very best to keep everybody safe. And that's all I have for you tonight. That's, we're responding as we can as we get information, but thanks so much, President Humbles.
And thank you for the update and congratulations to the communications team and Buildings and Grounds. I know you had a lot. We all lived through it, and so thank you. And then also for the folks that are working on the laptops for our children. I'm sure that it's very time consuming, so I appreciate all of that work too. And like we said, we know we are strong, we are Cedar Rapids, and we will get through this. Are there any board reports at all? Okay, everybody turn back to me. Okay, next we'll move to communications delegations and petitions. Board Secretary Day, do we have any speakers registered to address the board this evening?
Yes, we do.
Before we hear those who have requested to address the board, I'd like to remind you to please state your name and address for the record when you are called. You will be given up to five minutes for your remarks. Board Secretary, Secretary Day will serve as our timer and inform you when your time is up. Additionally, in order to abide by the open meeting laws, I'd like to remind the speakers that there will be no dialogue between the board members and the public during this time except for clarification, for clarifying, excuse me, the nature of the question or comments from the individual speaking. Laurel, will you call our first speaker, please?
Our first speaker this evening is Carrie Stasney. Carrie, if you would please make your way over here to the podium. Carrie is going to speak with us this evening about para pay.
Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Carrie Stasney. I am a para in the district and I have been here for seven years. I am coming to address para pay. As a single parent of three children, I am struggling to make it on my own, to make my ends meet. Many times, my family goes without. I go without paying for medical bills because I need to pay for medicine. I go without food because I want to give my extras to my children instead of myself. My kids don't get to go to the pool. My kids don't get to do all the football camps or the basketball camps or the tennis camps because we cannot afford it. Right now, as of three hours ago, I looked up what the poverty rate for Iowa is, it's $26,500 for a family of four. I do not make that much. I make $20,000, if that. With COVID hitting, I lost four extra hours per paycheck. That four hours may not seem like a lot, but it is. Not only did it help collaborate with the teachers for the children that I serve, but it also made that much of a difference in my pay, my income, to serve my own children. So like I said, every month, I have to choose which bill to pay in full and which one not to pay in full, so I don't run out of groceries or gas or medicine. A couple of weeks ago, my teenage son, he's 14, and I were doing errands. We drove by McDonald's and he started laughing. I asked him what was going on. He said, Mom, I could work at McDonald's and I would already make more money than you do. I did not find this statement funny. In fact, it hurt. My 14-year-old son can make more money than I do. I am a part of a system that helps educate these kids that are serving our meals. He then told me that his friend Preston works at a drive-through. He made $425 in one week. And he said, Mom, guess what he was doing? I said, what does he do? He mops floors. I did the calculations, he already makes more money than I do. He's 14 years old. I am faced with a dilemma, as many paras that you have heard in the past before me. Do I stay in the district or do I find other employment that will make more money than I am currently making? At the end of the day, after dealing, after working with children, I am emotionally, physically drained, and I have little to nothing left over for my own children and their own needs. I love what I do, but I also love my children and my family. With an ever greater parish shortage right now, we will be demanded to do even more. Not only is this not fair to us as educators, and that does mean food service, custodial, paras, teachers, we are all educators. It's not fair to the students and it's not fair to their families. We are violating so many IEPs the way it is. I am a one-on-one, and there have been times in the past that I have four students that I am going with to Gen Ed classrooms. That is not okay. I came here and I thought, how could I make it the biggest impact? How could I make the biggest statement? I literally thought about standing here for five minutes because, and not saying a word because as a para, that is how I feel. I feel that we are ignored, we don't get the credit that we deserve, and I'm not asking for, woo-hoo, you guys are great. What I'm asking for is to be treated like you treat the teachers, to be given the opportunity that I don't have to live below poverty rate. When you look at what a teacher makes and what a para makes, even with my own degree, I still make over $20,000 less than a teacher. Yes, they have a much greater responsibility than I do, but I am reteaching, I am accommodating, I am modifying, I do all the same things, only my degree is not teaching. I appreciate the time that you have given me, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stasney. Our next speaker this evening is Scott Muters. Scott, if you would make your way to the podium, and Scott is here to speak with us this evening about para pay.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you tonight. A little bit of background about myself. I'm an 82 McKinley grad, 85 Wash grad. I've taught in the district at Roosevelt, Kennedy, and Harding since 1998. My mom was an elementary BD teacher at that time, but now it's behavioral focus. My wife is a music teacher at elementary Viola Gibson. My sister teaches music at Taft. And the most important, I think, guy, my dad has been a bus driver for 21 years and 81-year-old going again this fall. He's been to his meetings already. Basically, I wanted to tell you where I was coming from in talking about paras. My mom and dad adopted 11 special needs kids. I'm the oldest of 13 kids. And so I have a very unique perspective of the paras and what they do above and beyond what they're asked to do. As Ms. Stasney had pointed out, that they take on things that are not basically in their contract because they care for students. And when I have students in my classroom that range in from 40 to 50 to 60 kids at a time, and they come in with their student, they're also helping me take care of the other students that might not be focused. So it's another pair of eyes that helps me do my job and helps the kids that are there wanting to do their personal best in everything they do to do that and not be distracted by other students. When my mom was teaching at Wilson Elementary, she would tell me stories of, you know, things that happened in her classroom and specifically her really good para. And one that stuck with me was an elementary student got out of hand, upset, as many students do, and threw a chair at her and broke her wrist. And this is the kind of stuff that paras are dealing with for 12 something an hour, 12, 20, whatever it is, an hour. When I went through Donut Land today, or Dunkin' Donuts, and I see they're paying $15 an hour for people to put donuts in boxes and make coffee, it just blew my mind, just blew my mind. I just really want to say that I could not do my job and my sister and my wife and especially my mother could not have done her job without the excellent paras that we have had in this district. And I'm afraid that we're going to continue to lose these excellent people if we're not paying them what they can, what they deserve, really. They're not asking for pie in the sky, be paid extravagant amount, but a living wage. And I hope that this board and the school districts really takes a look at this so we don't lose any more good paras. Thank you again for hearing me.
Thank you, Mr. Muters. Our next speaker is Lawrence Winkowski. Lawrence is here to address the board this evening with regards to board meetings.
Lawrence Winkowski, 4234 Morrell Road, Northeast. Questions I ask tonight are going to be rhetorical. They're questions I am asking the board to talk to about, between yourselves, administration to talk between the yourselves and with the board. I see our administration and staff doing an excellent job in that, but these board meetings do not make it easier for them. In some respects, it makes it harder because people come up here and they specu, comment on speculation of what's going to happen later in the meeting, or what they hear out on the street, or an inaccurate or incomplete article they may read or news story, instead of commenting on the facts. There's a lot of people, over 15 years I've been attending these meetings, who've come up here, I did not agree with what they had to say. But I respected it when they were at least providing, they were basing their statements on facts. But when they weren't based on facts, it's hard to, Annette. We, I mean, this should not be like a CNN news story where everything is speculation, Annette. The way it should be handled is there's going to be a presentation. Presentation should take place, the public should comment on it. And you know, actually, when the public comments on it, instead of them speculating, they may actually say, you know, I like that idea. I know that would make administrators or who's ever given that presentation a good warm feeling. After that should be the discussion, you know, not going later on, but right there, what's fresh in everybody's mind. And then if there's a vote on that topic, vote on it. School resource officers that we're continuously talking about, that's a prime example of something that this process should have taken place. There's also, you know, we got this thing, if I ask a question about a agenda-related item, it never gets answered. It cannot legally be answered during the public comment, but why can't it be answered or asked and answered again during discussion? Because I could send you an email and it could, you could ask it. Or this could have been your originally, your question you wanted answered and you could have asked it, but because it's asked during a public comment? This school board should either act as like proxies or surrogates for people's questions to get them answered. Questions asked up here must be resolved during the school board meeting. Otherwise, we have speculation leaving the meeting, which just makes more phone calls to administrators that they got to ask about something that should have been completed at the school board meeting. I wonder how many times during before meeting do administrators get calls from the public asking the same question? You know, which, you know, it doesn't make sense because they got so many other things they're working on, so they shouldn't have to constantly do this. And then it comes to agenda, you know, or consent agenda. The consent agenda, the concept of it is really very simple. You present it, you vote on it. If there is anything, any questions, you take it out of the agenda, vote on the rest of it, and then just address that issue. The problem is, someone asks one question, then there's a discussion. All of a sudden, these questions start populating like little rabbits, you know, and it's no longer a consent agenda. So one thing I will say right now, I am very disappointed in the community also. I'm disappointed in the community that yous continue to let this stuff happen in our board meetings, and yous don't stand up to make sure you get your questions answered.
Excuse me, Mr. Winkowski, your time is up. Thank you. Our last speaker this evening is Matthew Clay. Matthew would like to speak with us about CPI special needs.
Hi, Matthew Clay, 3508 Elm Avenue Southeast. I forgot my notes, so bear with me, and my anxiety is really killing me today. So I want to talk to you about CPI and its misuse and how often it actually gets, how often special needs children, disproportionately special needs children get put in the CPI holds institution. I, the most recent event was over the summer, which I handed in, which kind of details what prompted this, yet again, that I bring this same information to you guys again. My son is, he's turning nine next month. He is diagnosed with autism, ADHD, generalized anxiety, and he's also gifted. The gifted part of him, if many of you probably don't really understand what gifted means because it's not exactly what it sounds like, he develops asynchronously. So he's got a really high intelligence, but his social-emotional skills are very lacking. When you couple that with his other diagnoses, it makes the school environment very difficult for him. Since he's been in kindergarten, he's been put in CPI holds institution many times over the course of his tenure in the district. Thankfully, most recently, we ended up switching schools so he could be in behavioral focus. So there, and his teacher there is really wonderful and she's very well-equipped to handle a child like mine. But it's, CPI is still getting misused quite a bit. He has come home with bruises. He's been put in holds by people that are not trained. He's being supervised by people that are not trained, so they cannot tell whether or not those holds are appropriate or not. He's suffered trauma due to this, and which brings me to what I believe this school district should really adopt besides CPI, and that's trauma-informed intervention. They, they actually put the child's like needs really first, where you try to understand what is motivating behavior and try to limit it. So I'm asking the school district again to adopt trauma-informed care in the Cedar Rapids Public School District. At the very least, make sure that all of your people that are going to be doing CPI holds are well-trained because if they are, they, my son wouldn't be coming home with bruises. bruises on him by school staff. That's really all I have to say right now. I do want to say thank you to the paras though that are here, because my son is a one-on-one para, and I really do think that he should pay, or para pay for a job is what can be done.
Thank you, Mr. Clay. That concludes our speakers for this evening.
Thank you. Next, we will move to our consent agenda. Are there any items that a board member would like to pull for a comment, question, or a separate vote?
I need to pull the personnel report, BA 2200902, for a separate vote. I also would like to make a quick comment on it as well.
On the personnel?
Yeah.
Any other from, questions or comments from the board? We're going to vote, and we will not include the BA 22009 slash two. All in favor? Okay, sorry, let me move back. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of BA 22-009/02.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do we have any further discussion? Can we do a roll call on this one? Laura, this is a roll call vote.
Director Merschbach.
Aye.
Director Garlock.
Aye.
Director Reesinger.
Aye.
Director Borchstein.
Aye.
President Humble.
Aye. Next, we will move to the personnel report, the BA 22009 slash two, for a separate vote.
The comment I wanted to make is unrelated to the reason why I'm voting on it separately, but with regards to what we've heard from many people at this meeting and other meetings regarding para pay and all employees of the district, I think there's two dozen, by my count, employees were being hired in this personnel report at a wage of less than $15 an hour. And not that $15 an hour is necessarily a magic number, but you look all around the, you know, nation right now, the federal government has raised contractors with them, their minimum wage to $15 an hour. Companies across the country are doing it every day to $15 an hour. I saw a chart today, you know, post-COVID, basically every sector of the economy has gone from below $15 an hour as a starting or average wage to above it. And tonight, we're discussing spending an extra $30 million from the federal government, you know, over the next couple of years. And so, I do think it's important, and I just wanted to point out to my fellow board members, this is something that we vote on every time we have a board meeting and approve a personnel report. This isn't out of our hands, this is a policy that we are approving to pay these wages. And it's something I think we should look into as soon as we possibly can, because we've been hearing about it for a while now. And that's just the comment I wanted to make.
Thank you. We'll take a vote.
This would be a roll call vote?
This is a roll call vote. This is for the personnel report, BA 22009 slash 02.
Director Garlock.
Aye.
Director Reesinger.
Aye.
Director Borchstein.
Aye.
Director Merschbach.
I'm abstaining.
Thank you. President Humble.
Aye. Next, we will be moving to learning and leadership. We'll have Superintendent Bush and Deputy Superintendent Quaker, they'll provide us with an overview of our back-to-school for 2021, 2022 school year. I turn it over to the both of you.
Thank you so much, President Humble, and Board of Directors, and guests for being here tonight. So, again, as I said earlier, it is a happy new year, and here we are a year later, still making plans, and we, every year, we always talk about back-to-school, and certainly last year, it was called return-to-learn plans. And this year, I would say that it's back-to-back-to-school with return-to-learn components to it. So, Deputy Superintendent and I will provide some details, but also a high-level overview. So, as the pandemic continues, and as I said earlier tonight, we are navigating new variants of COVID. And what viruses do is they, it's survival of the fittest, isn't it, fellow science teacher down there, or science teacher here? Yep, so it's survival of the fittest, and they're trying, it's trying to find its way to keep existing. And so, as the variants continues to happen, we are still dealing with, of course, the pandemic. So, we are super proud of how we navigated things last year, and our mitigation efforts, and our health and safety efforts, but we also know that new information comes to us every single day. So, as information comes to us, we will continue to be flexible, we will continue to learn, and we will continue to communicate as we move forward. So, that's really the high-level overview of the theme. Yet, we have learned so much in the past year that we do feel prepared for the school year, and we are ready to welcome our kids back in person, but we also have other, another option for them if they should choose. So, we're going to start this off, and I'll ask Justin to advance a slide here. Are you driving there, Deputy Superintendent Quaker?
I think right now I'm driving.
Okay, very good. So, first slide.
All right, well, thank you. It was really exciting today to have new teachers here, so we had 67 new teachers with us for the entire day. They were excited to be here, and I think it's just that welcome back, it's like the first day of school with staff, and then next week, it will be the next celebration with everybody back. And then, of course, we have students on the first day of August 23rd, and I think the key thing to remember here is that is an early dismissal day, but these are just the times of school. And then another special note is preschool starts September 7th, so a little bit later. We are again offering two options for learning, and the first option is in course, that in-person learning. We believe those social interactions and that human connection is really important for students. We do have increased mitigation strategies in place, hand washing, sanitizing, cleaning classrooms and common spaces, classrooms all through the evening. So, I feel really good about the mitigation for bringing students back in person. But we also know that we need to provide another option for those students and families that maybe in-person isn't what they're looking for this year. So, we do have that CRVA option in place for kindergarten through high school students. It looks a little bit different at the elementary and middle school. So, high school, just quick high-level overview, is students can take a combination. So, I might take a class in-person, and I might take a class virtually through ingenuity that doesn't have that direct teacher, and then I might have a remote teacher instruction for another class. So, it's that wide-open combination. As of today, for our data for CRVA, we have for K through 5, we have 2.2% of our population that are in CRVA. For 6th through 8th grade students, we have 3.9, and 9th through 12, it's 2.7 of our students are in at least one virtually-led course or self-paced course. Again, remembering counselors are just back, we're getting those high school schedules put in place, so that could shift. Another really important message with this is due to the increase in the Delta variant positivity rate, we are extending the deadline for Cedar Rapids Virtual Academy registration to next week, Monday, August 16th at noon, for families who may want to explore Cedar Rapids Remote Learning Option. The original deadline was August 2nd. So, if you want more information, we have that CRVA website. Ernie Cox is also leading the charge through K through 8. He's the administrator overseeing CRVA. And high school students just need to connect and families with their counselor within their building. So, again, opening up that option, just in case people want that other opportunity because of those increased rates of positivity. In addition, of course, the district remains committed to meeting the needs of every student that we serve, and for some students, they may need some extras, so for special education, ELL learners, and gifted and talented, there might be additional supports. So, we continue to work on what the parameters of those needs look like on individual bases. For our elementary schools, buildings are open to the public, and we have everyday school structures in place with continued, again, mitigation strategies, which is really important. For elementaries, masks are highly recommended for staff and students at this level, since students are ineligible to receive the vaccine at this time. So, really looking, highly promoting people to wear them, even though we can't mandate it at the elementary level due to the lack of vaccines for our students. For middle school and high school students, buildings are also, of course, open to the public. Everyday school structures in place. Masks are, again, optional, but recommended for visitors, and all events may be conducted as usual with no capacity limits at this time. Again, as Superintendent Bush said, every day, things change. We had a meeting today, we had a meeting Friday, we had constant communication over the weekend. We'll continue to watch what's happening within the community and navigate that. Which leads us to health and safety. So, due to House File 847, signed by Governor Reynolds on May 20th of 2021, a school district is prohibited from adopting or enforcing a policy that requires employees, students, or the public to wear a mask while on school property. As such, masks will be optional for students, teachers, and visitors. Again, they're optional, but highly recommended, especially at the elementary level, due to the inability of our elementary students and learners to be able to get that vaccine. As you can see up here, again, we're doing the constant cleaning processes. Thank you to John and his team, hand washing, sanitizer stations, masks will be available for those that want to wear them, completely optional. When we look at transportation, due to federal law, students and staff riding in Cedar Rapids buses, vans, and vehicles do need to wear a mask. They don't have a mask, one will be provided for them, and we, again, will ask students to hand sanitize, and adults, as they get on the bus and as they exit the bus, for those mitigation strategies. Food and nutrition, I guess one of the things that is really exciting is we have free meals, again, for students and families for this upcoming year, which is great for schools. So, I think that's the positive. We are going to be serving meals in cafeterias, but trying to socially distance, again, where possible, focusing on the ability for students to engage, and we know those social interactions and those human connections are critically important for students at all ages.
And with that, I pass it to Superintendent Bush.
Thank you, Deputy Superintendent Quaker. We were allocated a certain amount of dollars, as Director Merschbach alerted to, spoke to earlier, in regards to SRR3, or the American Relief Act Fund. So, there was SRR1, SRR2, and SRR3 dollars allocated to our district. In addition to the mitigation efforts that were just highlighted by Deputy Superintendent, we also, our Buildings and Grounds Team is leading work around our HVAC systems. So, we did use some SRR2 dollars to implement a systems called bipolar ionization across our district, and actually upgrading seven of our school's HVAC systems. This will be a continuous process, it will take us a few more months to complete that process, but it is actually about mitigating through the air. All right, so it kills not only viruses, but it also molds and other things that grow in buildings that are older. And so, we want to make sure that we're doing everything we can, of course, to prevent the spread of the virus. So, these dollars can be spent on such efforts as that, but these specific SRR3 dollars, 20% of the SRR3 allocation, and Cedar Rapids was allocated $32 million, I'll forward the slides here in just a minute. These dollars, at least 20% of them, really have to go towards recovery of student learning. So, yes, they can be used for safety measures, but really, we need to focus at least 20% recovery of student learning. So, we're very appreciative of these dollars, but we're very serious about how we spend them. I just want to give a huge shout-out to our district and our community who participated in our feedback sessions, which we held over the past several weeks. So, we had our administrative team give feedback, we had our staff members give feedback, we had our community members give feedback, and then we sent it out to actually all, virtually, if they couldn't attend one of our sessions, to also have an opportunity to hear about what we're hoping to do with these dollars, and to get their input about how we recover learning and keep everybody safe. So, next slide, please, Justin. Just as a rep frame of reference, as a school district, we have been using a school improvement framework called the High Reliability Schools Framework. And if you go to the Level 1 on this slide, just zoom in on that. It's about creating a safe and collaborative culture that is paramount for us, because we know when we create a safe and collaborative culture, children and people in general are more likely to flourish and to learn. So, that continues to be our focus, and then you can see the two red circles here, one on access, so when we talk about access to education for everyone, that is why every child in this district has access to a laptop, and we continue to focus on their access to, no matter where they are, the internet, if they should need it. And then, what is focused on everything for us is equity, and making sure that each and every child gets what they need in order to learn. So, that's what we're focused on and how we're going to use these dollars. So, as we advance the next slide, please. Again, the recovery of learning of these dollars, at least 20%, have to be allocated towards what is called evidence-based interventions. The Department of Education actually defines what evidence-based interventions are and gives a lot of examples. Proud to say that the High Reliability Schools Framework is an evidence-based intervention, but we've been implementing evidence-based interventions for a long time. And so, we have been leaning on some things that we know, and then we're looking at things that we know will make us better as well. So, next slide, please, Justin. So, when we look at our allocation of $32.4 million, and at least 20% going towards that recovery of learning, we are very confident, especially after the feedback we got from our community, we will far surpass 20% of this allocation towards recovery of learning. We're looking at more, probably between the 20 and $23 million range of our allocation going towards recovery of learning. Much of that is, in order for kids to recover learning, we need great people in front of them, and it's compensating people to do heavy lifting work. And so, for example, our summer program, Kids on Core Summer Program, costs us about $2 million, and very appreciative of the Zach Johnson Foundation, but we were able to support more kids this summer and the following summer, and we'll be able to use these funds for three years, for another summer, in order to recover learning, and that's one example. Next slide, please, Justin. So, here's, here's some things that we reviewed with the community, and then I'll let you know what the community had to say about what I'm calling the buckets. The first bucket is added time, and those can be evidence-based interventions, summer schools, I just alluded to, before and after-school programming, and tutoring. As the community and our staff gave feedback, these were really popular, as well as leveraging, and families especially, asking for more tutoring opportunities for their children in order to recover targeted areas where they fell behind due to the pandemic. In the middle, green box, that's about core learning, and this, these are everyday practices that our teachers and our para professionals and all of our educators put in front of our kids every day, again, focused on equity, but our instructional practices that are already showing evidence of improved learning opportunities. So, when we think about things like differentiated instruction or multi-tiered systems of support, those things happen actually within the school day and targeting instruction for students. So, formerly known as maybe reading groups in the elementary, we differentiate to get kids what they need in a timely way. Then lastly, the blue area, we're also allowed to think about ways to accelerate and innovative practices to recover learning or accelerate learning. So, we're focused on early childhood. We got a lot of feedback from our staff and our community, is please, 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 think about those K1, 2, 3 years who lost significant foundational learning over the past couple of years, so what additional supports might we provide there? We are and have invited five more classrooms for preschool this year. We're using these dollars to make sure that that happens in a proactive way to prepare our kids for kindergarten, and many of our children didn't choose preschool, or some of our kindergartners didn't come to kindergarten last year. And so, we want to make sure that we are staffing at those levels appropriately. And then finally, innovative professional learning, what are the things that we've learned and will continue to get better around? And then finally, in the last slide, these, not that these areas aren't about learning, but they are more of the supportive. but they are more of the supportive areas for learning and again focused on safety so that all of our kids can learn at high levels. We provided a lot more resources in mental health. We're seeing that we're going to need to increase allocations here, and again with our feedback from staff and community, that was reinforced. So we know that we're going to need to continue to focus on supports of mental health. Thank you to our community partners who are the certified professionals in this area. All of our teachers and all of our counselors and administrators certainly look at and support staff as well, ways to create those safe environments, but when students need something further, we need certified therapists to be able to provide therapy to them. And then technology, we accelerated that technology plan by two and a half years and did it in six months, and so we will need to continue to allocate resources to now upgrade and get the devices in the hands of kids. Still focused on the internet and hotspots and access. And then finally, facilities and safety. What we found, and I think Executive Director Nicholson can attest to this, sometimes we needed more staff or to compensate staff for extra hours to make sure that safety measures were taken. So that's facility maintenance. Protective equipment, there are some things that will be granted to us. We get access to some, some things as a school district. For example, we had access to about 600 masks that we got for free, but that doesn't cover 16,000 children, it doesn't cover 3,500 employees. So we will continue to need to provide resources in this area. So overall, on the previous slide of those three buckets, I think we're looking at better than 20 million in these buckets, and then we'll continue to assess along the way. But the feedback from our community very much were some specific requests about specific ways to support children and their learning needs, and that's what we are going to continue to pay attention to as best as we can. So we will lean on our community partnerships, we're going to lean on our staff and get their feedback and compensate them for additional things that they're going to need to do, and then look at our kids and how they're performing and what each individual child might need. So I very much appreciate the feedback. It affirmed a lot of things, but also gave us some opportunity to take some deeper dives. So we would just be open to your questions and feedback.
Well, first I'd like to say thank you for providing us with an update because I know that's a concern of everyone. What does our return to learn look like, and that we are planning ahead, and we know the Delta variant is out there. So it's nice to hear. When I look, my question is to you, with this, the SRR3, this, the monies, when I looked at the allocations, the summer school before and after, this is going to be a three-year span that we would have access to these monies?
That's correct. And so really, by June of 2024, we need to wrap this up and as best as we can so that we know. The other piece that we're trying to create is ways in which we can sustain what we do. So certainly we can hire additional staff, but we may not be able to sustain that with state supplementary aid in the future. So whatever we put in place for additional staffing, we need to make sure that we've got a sustainability plan of some practices we're putting in place if we have to, if we won't be able to sustain that extra staffing down the road. However, it's nice to have 1,000 kindergartners coming into our district, and that's helpful.
Questions from our board? Any questions that you may have?
I do have a question. It ties to what you both were just discussing, and I'm wondering, so in the past, third-grade scores have kind of been indicative of long-term success academically. So I'm wondering, in relation to that and other areas, have proficiency rates and dates been changed to kind of accommodate this whole new world that we're living in of COVID and learning loss and learning recovery?
No, not in regards to how we're measured as a school district. However, the year of the pandemic, there was, there weren't any state assessments. No one took the assessment, so it was kind of like a, we didn't get measured in that, in that crisis. And I always say about summative assessments, it's a dipstick, it's one piece of information, but what we're leaning on is our practitioners with their unit assessments, daily practices, their measurements, and how they're assessing our kids to our district benchmark assessments. And we do have screeners, but none of those requirements or Iowa Core Curriculum expect, none of that's gone away. We still are expected to get students to grade level.
Okay, thank you. And kind of building on that, so the sustainability, so I think there's going to be new practice that will evolve just because we're in a new way of addressing recovery of learning loss. I'm wondering if there is, from an oversight perspective, if there's been like a system put in place that helps our staff retain, including staff training, including, you know, financial considerations, so that we can keep the best parts of what we're learning that's benefiting students and staff to move forward?
Yeah, I'll click in with Deputy Superintendent, just around some of the practices for professional development and honestly, feedback from staff. This is, so a year ago, when we were coming back to school in a weird way, we did a lot of kind of anytime, anywhere learning, did a lot of modules, we got a lot of positive feedback on that from staff. And so trying to scale on things that we had to learn because we had to do it that way, but I'll turn it over to you about some of the work that you've done around the New Art Science of Teaching and also feedback from staff on professional learning.
So we spent a lot of time last year having a group of administrators and teachers working on identifying those 12 NASAD elements to really guide our instruction. The next piece we're going to take is we're going to go through and identify and link that up to the evaluation process for staff. So today with new teachers back, we worked on those 12 identified elements saying that, hey, there's really 43, but if we do these 12 really, really well, this is what our district has chosen as a way to get us to the next level and to improve that student achievement across the board. I think another big piece is feedback from staff on where are our materials, proficiency skills, unit plans. So these SRR dollars, we know teachers in the classroom have the greatest impact. So listening to their feedback and involving them in the process, our administrators, our instructional coaches, we have our entire system working together on the guaranteed and viable curriculum and the alignment. So even today, one of the new teachers asks, is there flexibility in how we do this? Absolutely. There's all the flexibility in the world, that's the art, but the tightness is on the what? We want to ensure that when students leave kindergarten, these are the standards they've met. When they leave first grade, second grade, all the way up and in all the content areas. So really listening to staff, and we're going to have and pull them in to do those guaranteed and viable curriculum days all throughout the year for all of the contents, and we have a couple of years to be able to do it, so they're all a part of the process. Before it was a small group, we didn't have the opportunity, we didn't have the finances. The SRR dollars are allowing us to do that, to create this strong system. In addition, the metrics that we're measuring, we've expanded, we have Tableau now. If you haven't heard of Tableau, it's like a scorecard, I look at it as a scorecard. Or if you compare it to an athletic activity competition, right, it drives us to be better, good, bad, or indifferent. So we're putting that out in front, and teachers are going to have access to that in their PLCs to have data to drive those conversations. Again, we know where that's where the work happens and student achievement increases. So we literally will have scorecards throughout the system for teachers and PLCs, for administrators, for us up at District Office, to be able to be measuring, so we just don't have that screener data, we have those district assessments to closely monitor progress. In addition, community partners, as you can tell, I'm a little excited about all of this, our community partners have those scorecards and those outcomes that we're measuring that are in full alignment with those system indicators as well. So as a system, we're putting out the information in front of us, we can then make adjustments as needed. So when you talk about SRR dollars, it's great, we have three years, and if something we are doing doesn't work after the first year, we can take those funds and make an adjustment, right? And make it so, hey, this has worked in another building, maybe let's try this over here. So we can take those dollars and move and shift them around based on the needs of our students within our buildings.
Well, I like hearing that there's a lot of stakeholder voices involved in the process, everyone that needs to be participating is participating. And I like hearing that adjustments can be made for it to be more effective, for practice to be more effective. I'm wondering, is there an opportunity here when, when we're looking at what to keep? Like what's a winner, what we're going to keep, what's going to become part of our practice? Is there an opportunity there for, for that to kind of be condensed and presented through like teacher leadership opportunities? Can you tell me about that?
So in the green bucket, I guess, when I think about the recovery of learning bucket, with that core learning, the other piece of feedback that we got was the closer we can get these dollars to the buildings, based on their school improvement plans, the better. And so that they get, so we did shift and made building allocations. I don't know if we would have gone that direction in the spring had we not had really good feedback from our staff members and building administrators saying, you know what, if I had this bucket, what one school needs may not be exactly what another school needs, even though we all use the same language for school improvement. So that, that's the way for us, is making sure that those building allocations, there's a process in place so that those buildings can have greater access to that. And then we've talked about, we have teacher quality access to for our teachers with professional learning, and that maybe as we learn through the building allocation funds, we might need an additional, we've allocated, put some allocations to the side for professional development. It might be that we need teachers, that they discover something, say, I need access to this kind of professional learning, and then we use the funds that way as well. That was some loud feedback from our staff members that they would like some autonomy to improve their own practices.
Excellent. Thank you.
Director Carla. I have a comment and a question first. I am really happy to hear about the scorecards and the collection of data. I know that our administration is very fond of collecting data. I, I look at this really as an amazing opportunity, not only for our kids and our staff and professional development and getting our kids caught up on their learning loss, but I think if we collect this data and we show the progress that can be made when we have sufficient funding to invest in our kids and the resources that we all need to do this job, I think that certainly makes a case with supporting data that we can carry forward to, to the advantage of all public schools. So I'm really glad to, to hear there will be good data collection. My question is around the mental health bucket. You said that we're going to rely on our community partners, which is great. Do we have any intention to actually hire additional mental health personnel ourselves?
So Polk does have some specific staff that are hired in the mental health arena. We have staff members who are what we call socio-emotional experts, not necessarily certified therapists. And so that is what we lean on for our community partners. Our school counselors are certified school counselors, but not necessarily therapists. However, I think it has been some discussion with the Culture Climate Transformation Team, so I'll again lean on you, Deputy Superintendent.
So we put in a request and wrote a grant for $600,000 that we should know very, in the very near future. So when we put out the RFPs to community partners, we were very strategic in talking about direct learning loss and how to catch students up. If we get this $600,000 in addition to, we have some community partners that still applied that would align with that work, and that would be an opportunity to expand and open that up. Even if we don't, which we're pretty confident, maybe we shouldn't be, that we will get a lot of those funds, potentially even all of that, we could still open up that RFP process and have been in communication with a few of the community partners that could expand services. I think the, also the positive is we did add last year, and there isn't waiting lists for students with mental health needs. With that said, you have more people, right? There'll be more people that will fill those spots. It's just like classrooms, right? You have more room, somebody will take them over. So I think there's definitely opportunity there. We've been having consistent conversations. We don't have the exact date of when we'll know when we have those extra dollars, but we're pretty confident it will be soon.
We have weighed that question about hiring our own mental health therapist versus continuing to contract services with others. This is their area of expertise and their focus, and there's just a lot of advantage to the professional development that they provide, the resources that they have. And to Nicole's point, we were able to provide services for those who were asking for it, and we did increase our services and those partnerships. But I think it can continue to be a question for us to think about if this is an arena. But we do really lean on those, those experts in our community.
Do you, even before the pandemic, there was, you heard a lot about a shortage of mental health care. Is that a concern with our community partners, finding the personnel that they need?
So we live in an area in Iowa where we have a lot of opportunity, more so than some of our neighboring communities, especially in the rural communities. But I think similar to the teaching profession, they too are struggling to have enough people to serve their clients. And so we have open positions right now, just so you know, if you look at cr.k12.ia.us, there is opportunity in Cedar Rapids, but yes, they are, they too struggle with getting enough staff. Yep.
Thank you.
I have a question. It's kind of a higher view question about equity and a possible use of SRR dollars that occurred to me the other day. Recently, the federal government enacted a child tax credit advance where every child is supposed to get $250 a month as a benefit. And I've heard different reports that there's a possibility that some kids are being missed by that payment because they live in households that don't file taxes, and so they have to go through an extra step to sign up to receive that monthly benefit. And it seems to me that that's likely to be some of the poorest households as well who are in those types of households. And so this is kind of a new equity concern that, it's great that these other kids are getting the $250 a month, and I expect that to, you know, provide a lot of benefit to them and their education and their families. But if there's kids at the lower end of the income scale who aren't getting it, that makes the equity concerns even greater going forward. And so I'm just wondering, and this, this is also true of the recent news regarding an eviction moratorium and number of people who are behind on their rent, that's something that could really impact some of our poorest students in our school district. You know, sometime in the very near future, the possibility of losing housing because the eviction moratorium, you know, expires. And so I'm wondering if it's possible to use SRR dollars or how, if it's possible in any way, SRR dollars or not, to set up a way through the school district to make sure kids are getting, sign up for those benefits, getting those benefits, getting what they need, not being thrown out of their house if their family can't afford to pay rent. Because, you know, I feel bad for the kids and the families in general, but from our point of view, that's going to affect their ability to show up for school, do well in school, and really thrive. And so that just occurred to me the other day, I was wondering.
Well, I had considered that specific situation, but you're absolutely right. Usually when there's a family that's losing access in one area, they may be losing access in another as well. I think that we certainly could raise awareness, think about a communication plan, help people understand about that access. We can't pay families directly, that's not a way in which we can use.
I mean, pay like an employee to help keep people get signed up.
Yeah, yeah, I think what we can do is increase awareness and maybe even a campaign around that or, or information, and we do that with a lot of our community partners, especially with the county and the city and what's available to our families. So absolutely, we can bring that to our Culture Climate Transformation Team. Yep.
Any, go ahead. Any other questions?
I actually had a question about the health and safety, so if you wanted to ask an SRR question, that's fine.
No, I was going to health and safety eventually too, but go ahead.
Okay. Could you talk to us a little bit about the, the plan for contact tracing?
Yes, me? Okay, wasn't sure, here we, I'll take that one.
Go ahead and take it.
I got it. I got that one. So with Iowa Department of Public Health, the guidance changed there towards the end of the year, and we just recently received additional guidance from Iowa Department of Public Health. So we will not, our school district will not be contact tracing, but our local public health department can choose to do that. So at this point in time, if someone tests positive or if they are having So at this point in time, if someone tests positive or if they are having symptoms, they can, well, if they're positive, they need to isolate for 10 days. If they're having symptoms, we encourage them to be tested. We will be providing access to tests, which now you know the Iowa testing sites are no longer. But we just today find out that we can have tests, especially access for our employees to use those at home. And they are the certified tests, not one you would buy at Walgreens or CVS, but rather they'll come from the government agency. And if someone tests positive, they'll need to isolate for 10 days. So we will not be contact tracing though. And we won't be putting in the quarantine efforts that we had in the past as well. We can encourage that communication, but the guidelines changed for us in those efforts. So that's where we are at this moment.
So is, is Lynn County Public Health going to contact trace or no? You said that they can. I was just wondering if they are.
They, they, to my knowledge at this point in time, they won't be. But they can communicate, they will communicate with us for every positive case that comes to their attention that is our employee or our student. We will be communicating with families as we did last year via letter to let them know that there's a positive case in a school. And then we will also continue our data dashboard so that our families know positivity rates within our district.
Are we, are we allowed to contact trace or have we chosen not to?
We are allowed to contact trace. We won't have necessarily the same levels of supports that we had last year in order to, to do that because the guidelines changed in regards to mandates of quarantining.
So, so my, my mind's going to two places, so I want to make sure I have this correct. So we can contact trace, but at the moment, I'm not talking about what we do once we know. We, at this point, we have chosen not to?
That's correct.
Okay. And, and why, what is the rationale for that?
So two things, the guidelines changed for the Iowa Department of Public Health. And then also we had another meeting about this today. I'm looking at Linda. And so we have, when you have the level of vaccination rate that we do, for example, with our employees, that's why a lot of this shifted. You don't have to quarantine if you've been vaccinated or the majority of your population has been vaccinated. That is true for our employee group. In addition, we don't have all the data yet on our 12 years old and older population of students. If that percentage is 50% or greater in our, in our schools, we wouldn't be required to quarantine as well because of the access to vaccination. The greatest concern is of course for our elementary age children. So we're strongly recommending that folks continue to mask and wear masks because that's the best mitigation effort that we can put in place. So primarily it is the vaccinations that changed the quarantine rules and, and, and allowed us to as a school district to reconsider our own contact tracing efforts. Now, we certainly can reconsider that if we're finding that there's a need to. Right now, our positivity rate, to our knowledge, is very, 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 very low. But if we find that we have to shift, we're going to be flexible and we will shift.
So I would like, I would like the district to consider contact tracing sooner than waiting for the positivity rate to increase? Because if the positivity rate increases, that means we're too late. So then to the quarantining piece, which was the second part, do we have, I understand again, what we, I want to make sure we have a distinction between what we can do and what we are choosing to do. So right now, are we allowed to have some sort of quarantining policy and we are choosing not to?
So we can, similar to last year, we cannot identify a specific student individual and communicate to people that that.
Yes.
Okay. So, yes, there are things that we are choosing to do as a district, which are the recommendations of, that come from the Iowa Department of Public Health and the Department of Education. And we're choosing to, that alignment. One thing that we cannot do, as I think you know, is require masking.
Correct.
And that is in alignment with the state law. So Lynn County can require some things as a county or in alignment with the CDC, but we can't necessarily adopt some of those things as a school district because of the state law in regards to masking.
Yes.
Okay. So as we look at what we are choosing to do in regards to quarantining, we could implement further quarantining. It's just the recommendation is if there is a 50% or better vaccination rate, you don't have to require quarantining. What we don't have, which we had a year ago, was the remote access. We had a little more flexibility around that. And so we don't, which was of course very taxing on staff, but we tried to create these two clear pathways for families this year. So it's also a management of what we'll be able to manage. And with the quarantining, we, students are going to lose access to education because they won't necessarily, if they quarantine for 14 days, won't have access to their education other than supplementary work. And we certainly can do work from home and we certainly can do some home-based instruction. But they wouldn't have that remote access because they won't be able to float into the school of CRVA. So that will be a challenge as well for us.
Can we set a policy that allows for quarantining if somebody is exposed who was not wearing a mask?
We, we could consider that. Yep.
I would like.
Us to consider that?
I would like you to consider that, yes. And also finally, my last question along these lines is, when you say 50% vaccination rate, are you referring to the general population in a school?
Yes.
Okay. So obviously.
In any environment.
Yes. So, so obviously then at the elementary level, we would never be above 50%.
That's correct. And that is why we're strongly recommending mask wearing at elementaries, but we're not requiring it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Wanted to follow up on some of the stuff Scott was talking about there. Is there flexibility, so to speak, you know, if we were to have a, necessarily a quarantine policy, but I believe last year, didn't we notify if someone in your classroom, so to speak, was tested positive? Families of that classroom specifically were notified. Is that correct?
Yeah. And so we will continue to notify families with a letter. And then in the secondary schools, it'll probably be at the school level because the students change their classrooms so many times a day that they could be exposed to many within the school. So we will let the school community know. And families do can choose to keep their children home.
That's what, that's what I was asking. So like in elementary classroom, you'll know that someone in that classroom had tested positive. So if the family chose to keep them home, they would know that their classroom was affected.
And we will, as appropriate, make sure, each school's just a little bit different because of their sizes. We will make sure that we are communicating with those who need to know that information. And also depending on the activity of the individual who tested positive, we may have to let not just a classroom know, but the, a greater population know.
And, and so my bigger question was, is there flexibility like on attendance, so to speak? Are we going to, you know, punish kids for not coming to school who choose to stay home? Are they, are families given that flexibility if they know that there's an exposure to keep their kids out of the classroom? I know we're concerned about them losing days.
So this is, this, this precedes the pandemic. Kids cannot be penalized for attendance. So we always have to provide access to their education. And, and so that's very true. And we would continue to do our very best to provide that access. It's just not the same. However, what we have learned is teachers record their lessons or they do other things and kids can watch that after the fact. And we would do our very best to dial kids in as if we could remotely, if they have that access. It's just a, just different circumstance.
Also following up on what Scott was saying about the 50% of the population being vaccinated, how are we going to, are we having everyone who's vaccinated, you know, provide their vaccination card and checking them off the list? How are we going to know?
So actually Lynn County Public Health can give us information regarding that. We held a vaccination clinic, so for us it was data that was pretty readily available to us. We cannot require or mandate that people show us vaccination because we don't require that people get vaccinated. We just provide the opportunity for them. But we can get the data from Lynn County Public Health. They can give us a percentage rate of the number of people even within one environment that are vaccinated according to their records. They may not have all those records. Especially if someone's new, coming new to us from somewhere else.
So on another quick note with CRVA, and I want to stress this. So last year, we were very flexible in and out of environments. And something we learned from that experience is that caused disruption for students, for families and for staff. So we're opening up the option this year again till Monday, till the following Monday, August 16th at noon, wanting families, and I know things change daily, to make their choices and then commit to that for a certain period of time for the semester. And then when vaccines hopefully are ready available for elementary students, I'm sure there'll be some that want to come back to the environment. But again, that in and out was really hard on students, families and staff. So based on the information that people know at this time, we're asking them to make that commitment for the semester and choose what option is best for them as a family and their children.
So how are you getting that information out to parents about the?
So we have a great communication that our communications team has drafted and worked with all of us on putting out that will go out actually this evening.
Okay.
I, I still have some concerns about our masking and our effect on the unvaccinated. You know, I know the vaccine is available to everybody, but I don't know the information. And I'm wondering if you have talked to Lynn County Public Health about, not necessarily just the county, but our district specifically, if there's any zip codes or even if they have it broken down on a smaller neighborhood level of what percentage of the overall population of our community is unvaccinated? Because we've got kids who aren't vaccinated, not all wearing masks in a school building. Are there places or the community at large where the spread potentially in the school is going to affect at-risk people? You know, and again, they've had their chance to vaccinated, some might say, but I don't know the story for everyone who hasn't been vaccinated or, you know, why the situation is like that. And I don't know the numbers as they are, but I, I know that not everybody's vaccinated. So have you had any conversations with Lynn County Public Health about the overall community vaccination rate?
So hats off to Sandy Byer, our district school nurse. Maybe daily conversations with Lynn County Public Health. And I too have been a part of Lynn County Public Health conversations. They had such positive feedback for us, again, on those five vaccination sites that were at our kids-on-course sites. The 274 community members who chose to participate there said that they participate, many gave feedback that it was the accessibility of the location. And also they felt at ease because they knew the school. And so there's been a request for us to perhaps offer that opportunity again as a school district, which we are willing to collaborate with Lynn County Public Health and do that again to provide access to our community members. So in regards to the specific data and zip codes and down to addresses, we do not have that information. But we do know the percentage of the county rates. And so that will, but that includes, you know, 11 other school districts. And so we will, or maybe better than that, but we will continue, of course, to collaborate with Lynn County Public Health. I think it's similar to what, when we look at that HRS framework, it's about equity and access. And the more access we can provide and the more support we can provide, we are very willing to do that as a school district.
Right. And equity concern is a major one for me because I'm assuming people without health insurance, people who work long hours. You know, you hear reports about people afraid of missing time at work because of side effects of the vaccine. And, you know, are those people living in multi-generational households? Are we going to affect at-risk people? That's really a concern. So along those lines to our, I, I thought I spread something in the presentation before, but maybe I missed it or read it someplace else. The CDC is recommending masks now, or at least the counties with high transmission, which I think we qualify for. So the CDC is recommending masks for people who are unvaccinated. We know our young students aren't vaccinated. We know probably a good percentage of the students over 12 aren't vaccinated as well. So I'm, I'm wondering what it looks like to recommend masks in schools. Like there's a question I had asked through email before, how many masks do we have? Do we have one of these blue surgical masks for everybody who walks through our door every day for, until everybody's vaccinated?
Well, we have to require them. Them on the buses. So we are prepared for that. And yes, we're prepared, prepared to hand them out as, at schools as well. So we have to keep a stock in place and we can strongly recommend, we just can't require.
Can we put a big 10 by 10 poster at the front of every school that says, the CDC says you're less likely to get sick if you put a mask on and here's your mask?
Well, we, we, I'll just say that, kind of coming back to Director Rice, there's things that we can do and, or then things, you know, that we choose to do. And I'll just say that I think that this is what we've discovered as a school district is we're trying to do our very best, but we also know that we're not the ones who are always, you know, creating the, the guidelines. And we want to make sure that we're doing everything we can. And so we absolutely can keep them accessible. We can keep them at the, as soon as people walk in the door. I put a box out there tonight, but I can't require folks to do it.
I totally understand. And I'm just, in between the CDC guidance, which we're recommending people follow and which I think we all would say is the right thing based on the science to stop the spread of the disease. And state law that forbids us from requiring masks, where's that place where, what percentage of students can we get to voluntarily wear a mask and staff as well? And, because if the CDC is recommending it, I'm assuming wearing a mask is going to reduce transmission. You know, you hear that the Delta variant, it might not work as well, but they're, they're recommending it for a reason. So I'm just interested in getting that percentage of students and staff who walk through the door every day to make the choice to wear a mask. And how do we do that? And I don't want, I don't want us as a school district to say, this is a fraught political, you know, topic where people have differing opinions and so we're going to pull back and not put that big poster up that says, please wear a mask. You know, that's, that's just my point of view on it.
I can just interject for just a second. I, I think collecting statistics and information, I think we need to be really careful. Well, not in a HIPAA violation there. That's patient information.
Yeah, that's correct.
Private.
And I think about everything the district is doing that they are letting folks know. I mean, we are doing everything possible to keep our children safe. And we can't just force people. And, and I understand what you're saying, Director Merschrock, but we can't put signs out and.
Can we? No, can we or can we not put a big sign?
No, but I'm just saying that.
That was my question. You just said we can. I, I want to know, can we? Based on the new state law.
No, I am saying that you had, you had said, can we put? And that I believe Superintendent Bush.
So we can encourage folks. We can recommend it. We can't require it. But I will say that we did get some additional data and feedback in regards to the social emotional components because we could make those kinds of strong standpoints all day long. In the end, children are, their, their parents are their first teachers, are going to make recommendations for them. And we have to support that, no matter what the opinions are. And we try to do that with almost everything that we do. And we don't want to put children in the middle between their parents and the people who support them for eight hours a day at school. So we have to be careful about how we are approaching this because we want to support all children and all families in our district. Absolutely, we understand public health guidelines and absolutely we're going to make strong recommendations. And in the end, we don't want to have any child walk into the building feeling unwelcome there. And so we will do our very best to support everything we can possibly do. But we also need to make sure that kids feel safe coming to school. If, even if they're choosing not to wear a mask, is that their family's choice or their choice? We have to support them.
And a positive data point, all of the thousands of students in summer programming, there were two positive students throughout the entire summer that we were aware of.
Over 2,000 kids.
Right. That came on a regular basis to school every day. So we do have safety processes and procedures and mitigation strategies that definitely are working for the system and that we can feel good about. And there is that social emotional aspect of really needing kids in schools and parents can make that decision. But we're saying, we truly believe it is safe and we want to welcome your students. We want them all to feel that sense of belonging. It's really important.
But we can strongly recommend it.
Absolutely.
I'm just concerned about the gap between strongly recommend and our impact on the community as a whole. And so I understand what you're saying, but there's people who are unvaccinated out there. And as I, you know, understand the science, if you have risk factors contracting COVID, you know, it's, it's not good. There's a reason why we're all wearing a mask up here to. There's a reason why we're all wearing a mask up here today. There's a reason why we've gone through this over the last however many months. And so I just, I just want to make sure that we are, I don't, I don't know how to say it, but I don't, I just want to make sure we're doing everything that we possibly can in, in reason, you know, that makes sense for everybody, given that state law has changed and we cannot require masks as we did last year.
Well, thank you all, and thank the board for the presentation. And like we said, you'll keep us informed with the updates. I think that will be very helpful for us as well as the community as we move forward. Thank you so much. And with no further business, we stand adjourned, and have a good evening. Thank you all.
Thank you.